Good morning, everybody, and welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Mason County Commission for November 5th, 2024. We're going to go ahead and begin with a pledge of allegiance. Chief Drackebly, would you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's your pledge? Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutie.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
We have a quorum. Next up is item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do we have correspondents come before the commission?
Yes, we do. Federal Energy Regulatory Commission sent notice regarding 2024 dam safety inspection follow-up Cushman Number One Development Cushman Project. Monty Ritter sent a letter regarding Mason County Recreation Area to Shelton Trail. Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: Special occasion license for Harstein Island Community Club and Mason General Hospital Foundation, and notice of cannabis license application for Gold Cast LLC. Advisory board applications were received from Bob Wilkinson for the Planning Advisory Commission, and Joel Glenn Harper for Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging. Mason County Public Health District Number Two sent in their levy certification. Christine Perry sent in a letter concerning removing debris from a culvert on North Shore Road in Belfair. And Habitat for Humanity sent an invitation for the groundbreaking ceremonies for Destiny Bosworth and Sarah Pippin's families' homes.
Thank you. Item number 4.2, Mason County Clean Water District Annual Water Quality Report News Release. Hi, Ian.
Morning, Commissioners, Ian Tracy, and Randy Netherland. The Mason County Public Health and Human Services has published our annual water quality report for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. This report describes the work of clean water district staff, surface water quality monitoring data, and changes in shellfish growing area classifications for the portions of Mason County that float into Hood Canal and South Puget Sound. The report can be found at the links in the news release. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the 4.3, 2025 Solid Waste Rate Increase News Release, please.
Morning, Commissioners, Loretta Swanson, Public Works. Per Mason County Resolution Number 2022-27, disposal rates at all Mason County Transfer and Dropbox stations will increase by 3.1% beginning January 1, 2025, as directed by same resolution. Fees will be increased each year by the amount of the August to August Consumer Price Index, CPIU, for the Seattle-Tacoma-Bellevue area. This increase is to cover the annual cost increase experienced by the county to operate and maintain the Shelton-Hoodport Union and Belfair Transfer Stations and Dropbox Station locations. And new rates are posted on our website.
Item number 4.4, Annual Mason County Heritage Grant Cycle News Release.
Morning, Commissioners, Luke Fiscusi, staff for the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'll paraphrase a little bit for this news release. The Mason County Commissioners and the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission are pleased to announce the opening of the 2025 Heritage Grant Cycle. The Mason County Historic Preservation Commission administers the annual Mason County Heritage Grant Program to assist projects that promote the public's access to county history. The program is funded with a portion of document recording fees collected by the Mason County Auditor. The revenues accrue to a dedicated fund and may not be used for any purpose other than to promote historic preservation. For the 2025 grant cycle, a total of $20,000 is available. Grants in up to amounts of $5,000 may be awarded to qualified organizations for professional development, education, small capital projects, collections management, heritage investigations, and historic preservation. And this is a reimbursement grant with a six-month project period. Both the grant guidelines and the application, as well as my contact information, the rubric for evaluations, can be found on the Mason County website, which is masoncountywa.govbackslashhistoricbackslashheritage-grant. Proposals can be mailed or hand-delivered to the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission at 615 West Alder Street in Shelton, Washington, and applications must be received by 12:00 PM on January the 17th, 2025. For any questions, please contact myself, Luke Fiscusi, at 360-427-9670, extension 282, or by email at hpc@masoncountywa.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item number 4.5, Razor Road Improvement District RID Public Meeting News Release.
Loretta Swanson, Public Works again. This is an announcement for a community meeting. Mason County Public Works Department will be holding a public meeting to discuss the RID Road Improvement District proposal for connecting the county road Razor Road West to the private section of Razor Road East and out to State Route 3. This meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 20th, 2024, at the North Mason High School in the Commons, located at 150 East North Mason High School Road, Belfair, Washington, 98528. Meeting is scheduled to begin at 5:30 PM. The public is encouraged to come and participate in this interactive meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other correspondence or organizational business coming forth today? Okay, thank you. Next up is item number five. This is the open forum for citizens' input. Oh, no, it's not. I'm going to back up. I'm sorry. We've got a special event that's happening today. Because of the location and the people involved, although we are all proud, we are going to turn this over to Commissioner Schutie for this recognition, very special recognition. Commissioner Schutie?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to take an opportunity to do two things. One, we got a lot of phone calls, and most of them are not people happy with the level of service that they get from all of the people that work for the county. But earlier this year, I got a phone call from Dr. Louise Kaplan, who is a friend and colleague and mentor of my wife, Catherine, and a professor at Washington State University, who had a difficult experience, but one that was, I think, made a lot better by the dedication and service of members of our SORT team, our search and rescue team here in Mason County. And so Louise and I had a chance to chat about her experience, and she had asked for an opportunity to recognize those who came to her aid when she was out hiking in our community. And so after a little bit of effort to kind of get everybody together and put things together, I'm really excited to be able to welcome members of our SORT team here this morning to provide a little bit of a recognition for the support and help that they rendered to Louise, but also the work that they do every day, you know, in our community to keep people safe. And so I do have some certificates to hand out here in a minute, but I wanted to see, Louise, if you wanted to maybe make a couple of comments. I wanted to offer you that opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioners, very much for this opportunity. As Kevin said, I'm sure you get a lot of complaints, but I was filled with praise. And so it's a very daunting experience to have an accident in the mountains, especially in February, when it was a little cold and there was snow, and it was the stars aligning. I was able to, I had a Garmin, but for some reason, I had to call my son on the phone because I had service. And I said, "Call 911, I'm sure I broke my ankle." And I went up the hill to get better service, and I met these two amazing women who stayed with me until the search and rescue team showed up. One is a triathlete, the other is a former Olympic trial runner, and the poor dog just stayed with us. So they stayed with me for quite a few hours until search and rescue showed up. And Angus was the first one to show up. And it was like a spiritual experience with this headlight, you know, just framing him. And I have to tell you, I never would have guessed it was him had I not had him introduced to me again, because it looks really different in the dark in search and rescue. And so I had, my first comment to him was, "Don't you need a jacket? I don't want you to get hypothermia." He took excellent care to make sure that I was warm, and the team showed up, and there were all sorts of other volunteers waiting to help if necessary. And Deputy Sheriff Parsons was there behind the scenes organizing everything. And I was telling them that I tried not to complain about a single thing, but when I was told that Plan A was a helicopter ride, Plan B was a litter carry, and Plan C was an overnight camping, I just said, "Really?" That just seemed too much at that moment. But everybody just did such a remarkable job, got me out. Helicopter, I don't know how it happened, but they managed to clear, I think Trinity, you stayed with me, and Michaela and Cole cleared a spot that they could drop the litter. It's like out of a movie. It's just unbelievable. So I'm here today because they saved my life, and you can't say thank you enough for that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Louise. I was also sure Deputy Parsons has a prepared remarks. No, I'm just kidding.
Morning, everybody. Deputy Parsons, Mason County Sheriff's Office, the team leader for the Special Operations Rescue Team, or SORT. I'd like to just thank the members and the agencies that are here with us as well that helped you on that day. We've got West Mason Fire, we've got Union, and we've also got Hoodport Fire here to say that we appreciate the recognition and we like the follow-up. We don't often get follow-up from the people that we rescue out there, so we do really appreciate it, and we thank you. And Plan C, we hope we never have to do Plan C, because that makes for a lot of overtime and a lot of cold tiredness. So I'm glad that we, Plan A works. It just took a long time to make Plan A work, so Plan B was on its way up.
Thank you, Deputy.
Of course.
So as I promised, I do have a couple of certificates here, and I think we're probably short of a couple, so if I don't have one for you, we're working on getting those made up. But first, Deputy Parsons? Thank you. And then I think Deputy Limper is on military duty? Okay, so.
I can issue that to her when she gets back.
Thank you. Turning to Reitmeyer? And then the last one that I have is for Angus Carpenter and. And so, yeah, just appreciate everybody being here, and if, maybe we can indulge and just do a quick picture with Louise?
Absolutely.
The sheriff.
Everybody can be gathered over there. Can you gather right here?
Sure. This also serves as proof of purchase to my wife that I do do fun things occasionally. I'll pop in the back all the time.
I'm short, I can be.
You can be in the front.
Excellent. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate it so much.
And they'll forward that to you, and you can get that.
Absolutely. We'll make sure you get it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Schutie, for being the one that brought that forward from the commission as well. Thank you. All right, next up, item number five, Open Forum for Citizens' Input. This is your opportunity as a citizen to talk to the commission and the public on any item that is not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we ask that you hold off. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when the item comes forward. So if it's not on the agenda, remember, there's a 15-minute total time limit, three minutes per person to speak. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Please, raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Okay? Anybody in the room? Hearing none, is there anybody online that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? I know I have, Tamara, please, go ahead, and you start.
Good morning, everyone, and congratulations, and thank you to all of the first responders for your great work. My name is Tamara Ingleson, and I'm speaking on behalf of New Horizon Communities. And I just want to share and remind everyone that it is Give Local Time through the Community Foundation of South Puget Sound. So if you go to SPSGives for SouthPugetSoundGives.org, you'll see all sorts of organizations that do a lot of great work here in Mason County and in Thurston and Grace Harbor counties as well. And so I just really want to encourage everyone to participate. I hope that you'll include all of the organizations that work to help mitigate housing and homelessness issues, including us. But it's really important that we all just take advantage of these opportunities to invest in our community where the dollars can be leveraged and really make a difference collectively.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom land who would like to speak to the commission and the public on any item that is not on the agenda? Please raise your hand, or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none, we will move forward with the agenda. Next up is item number six, Adoption of the Agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. It has been moved to second for the adoption of the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Item number seven, Approval of the Minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the April 23rd and October 21st, 2024 Finance Committee Meeting Minutes, September 30th, October 7th, October 14th, and October 21st, 2024 Briefing Minutes, and October 8th and October 22nd, 2024 Regular Minutes, and October 15th, 2024 Elected Official and Department Head Meeting Minutes as presented.
Here's the hard part.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved to second for the approval of the minutes, April 23rd and October 21st, 2024 Finance Committee Minutes. I'm having a hard time today. Minutes for September 30th, October 7th, and October 14th, and October 21st, all of 2024 Briefing Minutes, October 8th and October 22nd, 2024 Regular Meeting Minutes, and October 15th, 2024 Elected Officials and Department Head Minutes. Any polls or adjustments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. The minutes are passed. Next up is the approval of the Action Agenda. All items listed in the Action Agenda will be passed with one vote of the commission, but they'll first be read into the public sphere here. After we read them into the public, you'll be given an opportunity to take an item off for a special vote, if you want to see how we vote, or if you would like to testify. If not, if you're not sure if you want to testify, you'll be given an opportunity to ask a question of staff that would give you the opportunity to decide whether to take it off for a special vote, or whether just to go ahead and move forward. With that being said, we're going to go ahead and read them to the public first. I'll read item number 8.1 through 8.3. Commissioner Schutie, if you will read 3, 4, and 5, and Commissioner, no, you'll read 4, 5, and 6, and Commissioner Trask, 8, 7, and 8. 8, 7, and 9. Item number 8.1, Approval of Warrants and Treasuries Electronic Remittance Claims Clearing Fund, Warrants Number 8108250 through 8108530. The amount, $2,479,170.65. Direct Deposit Fund, Warrants Number 110725 through 111137. The amount, $923,716.40. Salary Clearing Fund, Warrants Number 7008460 through 7008486. The amount, $621,972.87. Item number 8.2, Approval to Set a Public Hearing for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, at 9:15 AM to Consider Updates to the 2025-2023 Capital Improvement Program, the CIP, Appendix A of the Capital Facilities Element. Item number 8.3, Approval of Resolution Setting Hearing Date with the Hearings Examiner for Wednesday, December 11th, 2024, at 1:00 PM via Zoom to Consider Public Comment on Road Vacation Number 420.
Mr. Chair, item 8.4, Approval to Reappoint Jan Goodpastor to the Historic Preservation Committee for a Term Expiring November 30th, 2027. Item 8.5, Approval for the Public Health and Human Services Director to Sign the Interagency Agreement between the Washington State Department of Agriculture and Mason County Public Health and Human Services in the Amount of $27,131.11. Item 8.6, Approval of the Consolidated Homeless Grant Amendment with Crossroads Housing in the Amount of $112,000.
Item 8.7, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant, Contract Number E25-112, in the Amount of $31,453. Item 8.8, Approval to Him in Resolution Number 2023-067 for the County's 2025 Health Insurance Contributions to the Following. Effective January 1st, 2025, for participants of the PEB Medical Program, which allocates through the pooling method, $1,236.69 per month county contribution for employees with single contribution, or single enrollments on medical, and $2,002.67 with dependent enrollments for Teamsters, probation, community and health, or community and family health, nonrepresented elected officials, public defenders, prosecutor's support staff, public defender's support staff, deputy prosecutors, and general services. Item 8.9, Approval to Set a Public Hearing for Tuesday, December 3rd, to Consider the Sale of Parcel Number 32005-31-60070 in the Amount of $10,000 to Thaddeus and Brenda Bamford.
Now that the items have been read into the public, this is your opportunity to ask a question, if it would help you make a decision whether to take it off for a separate vote. Is there anybody in the room that has a question on any of the items? Anybody out in the Zoom land that has a question on any of the items, please raise your hand, or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Seeing none, Commissioners, are there any items you would like taken off for a separate vote? Is there anybody in the public that has an item they would like taken off for a separate vote? On Zoom, if you'd like an item taken off for a separate vote, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you, or raise your hand. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of today's Action Agenda Items 8.1 through 8.9 as read.
It has been moved to second for the approval of the Action Agenda in its entirety, items number 8.1 through 8.9. Any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Next up, we have item number nine, Other Business, Department Heads and Elected Officials. Are there any department heads or elected officials who would like to speak today? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. I do know, because I know there's a question that one of the Commissioners has for you, so go ahead, if you don't mind. But he's going to speak first, then we can ask him a question for clarification.
You have a question? Good morning, Commissioners, Steve Dunkle, Mason County Auditor. Just want to remind everybody, today's election day, and you have till 8:00 PM to get your ballots turned in. Hopefully, everybody here has already voted. As of this morning, we have 32,600-plus votes, our ballots in-house, and that's a 70.5% turnout, so things are going really well so far. And both vote centers here and in Belfair will be open until 8:00 PM. And I want to give special thanks to over 60 volunteers that we've got lined up to help operations today between the Democratic Party, the Republican Party, League of Women's Voters, and ROTC. So things are going smooth. What questions do you have?
So the governor issued a state of emergency, I believe. Can you clarify that and how it affects Mason County? I've been getting calls, so people are assuming that we're under a declaration of.
Well, the state's declared the emergency. We had some discussion around whether or not to declare, make a similar declaration at the county level, and decided not to. But, so I don't think it's, as far as what Governor Ginsley has declared, is really going to affect us one way or the other, but we've got everybody on point. All eyes are on our Dropboxes and every other element of our election process. So with that, that includes our Sheriff's Department and Shelton Police Department, as well as our volunteers, observers, and staff. So everyone is on point.
Thank you.
So far, so good.
One good hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other department head or elected official who would like to speak at this time? If so, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Yes, go ahead.
Mark Neary, County Administrator, I just wanted to clarify, Auditor Dunkle, that, so since the state declared an emergency, we fell underneath that declaration of emergency and stood up our EOC to monitor all of our Dropbox locations. And so if, in fact, something were to happen and we needed to respond, that we could immediately come back to the Commissioners, declare disaster, and respond. So in essence, we did fall under the state's declaration of emergency to stand up the EOC to monitor that, and we let the state know that we were present and monitoring.
I'm glad you mentioned that part, too. I want to short-change our emergency management team, because they've been with us throughout this whole process to get ready for the general elections.
So if people saw the, if people saw the notification that went out, that may be where the confusion is, is that when we stand up our EOC, we notify the state that we stood it up and what we're doing. And so we've done that, and there's no detriment to standing up the Emergency Operations Center. It's just a safeguard. And so we're there watching and ready to respond in case something were to happen.
And Commissioner Trask was making note that we are not under a state of emergency ourselves. We're prepared to be one if we needed to, but that's it. Is there anybody, any other director or department head who would like to speak? And now, is there anybody on Zoom? Is there a department or elected or department head that wants to speak? If so, unmute yourself, say your name, and I'll call on you. Hearing none, we will move forward. Next up is our hearing. We're going to move into public hearings. Item number 10.1 is a public hearing to consider the approval of the franchise agreement between Mason County and River Haven Recreation Incorporated to construct, operate, and maintain the water system along West Haven Drive, Schaefer Park Road. Staff might, no, that's not said. One of these days, they're going to get this right on here.
So if you guys don't want to stay, you don't have to stay.
Oh, yeah.
You're more than welcome to sit through the hearings.
Yeah, bye, guys. Have a great one. Thank you.
I'll get back to work.
Good call.
I saw a little bit of the, can we, can we?
Bye, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Enjoy after you, so the hearing is officially open. Good call.
Lovejoy Schaefer is standing in for Mike Collins for Public Works. We received a franchise agreement application for River Haven Recreation. Kenneth Smith, the Treasurer and Water Manager at River Haven Recreation, Inc., has applied for a franchise renewal. Public Works has reviewed and updated the franchise language and included a provision for an automatic renewal for up to three 10-year terms. The franchise will cover their water system along West Haven Drive in the River Haven Recreation Community near Schaefer Park Road. We are requesting approval of the franchise agreement between Mason County and River Haven Recreation, Inc., to construct, operate, and maintain their water system along West Haven Drive, adjacent to Schaefer Park Road.
Is there anybody who has any question for staff in the staff's presentation? If so, raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Is there anybody in Zoom that has any question for staff in their presentation? This is not an opportunity to testify. If this is just for questions, if so, raise your hand or unmute yourself, and I will call on you. I see none. Thank you. Next, we will open up to public testimony. Is there anybody in the public who would like to testify on this issue? Anybody in the room? Hearing none, anybody in Zoom that would like to testify on this issue? Unmute yourself, raise your hand, say your name, anything, and we'll call on you. We will close public testimony. Now that we've closed public testimony, we move into Commissioner Deliberation. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the franchise agreement between Mason County and River Haven Recreation Incorporated to construct, operate, and maintain their water system along West Haven Drive and Schaefer Park Road.
I'll second.
It has been moved to second for the approval of the agreement between Mason County and River Haven Recreation Incorporated to construct, operate, and maintain their water system along West Haven Drive, Schaefer Park Road. Any comments? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. That hearing is closed. Next up, item number 10.2, A Public Hearing to Consider the Request of a Rezone of 325 Acres from Rural Residential 10, RR10, to Rural Residential 5, RR5. Staff, Kel Rowan. And she's actually here. It is the person that says on the list.
That's right.
Hi, Kel.
Good morning, Kel Rowan, Director of Community Development. I made an error and failed to get out the public notice posted in the Journal for this public hearing. So the folks, the neighboring properties did receive notice. They will not receive another notice. So for anyone who's watching on Mason Web TV and is curious about this hearing, we are continuing it to Tuesday, November 19th, same time, 9:15 AM. And notice is being posted in the Journal this Thursday and next Thursday. And again, we'll have the meeting on Tuesday, November 19th, at 9:15 AM. And I apologize for the inconvenience.
Okay, so what we're facing right now is we're still going to go ahead and move forward. We're going to ask anybody if they want to testify, so we can get it on the record if they do. But this will be re-presented November 19th in its entirety. With that being said, is there anybody in the room that has a question for Kel regarding her presentation? I see none. Anybody on Zoom that has a question for Kel regarding her presentation? If so, unmute yourself, or raise your hand, and I'll call on you. If so, unmute yourself, or raise your hand, and I'll call on you. I see none? Then we're gonna move into public testimony on this one. Is there anybody in the public who would like to testify? Anybody in the public who would like to testify on Zoom? Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. I'm gonna close that. We're gonna move to Commissioner's motion to re-hear this on November nineteenth.
Mr. Chair, I move continuation of item ten point two to November nineteenth at nine fifteen A M.
I'll second.
It has been moved in second to continue this hearing to November nineteenth at nine fifteen A M. Any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is our, our board reports and calendars. Commissioner Shutey, if you don't mind starting us off, Commissioner Trask, then myself.
Yeah, for sure. So have a closed session after this meeting for Labor, then have a Mason Transit Authority H R Subcommittee meeting, Ecosystem Coordination Board, be it the Belfair Sewer Ribbon Cutting, then out for the Veterans Day weekend, have the Mace Comp Board of Directors meeting, E D C. Board, and then back, we'll briefings on November eighteenth.
All right. As Commissioner Shutey said, well, we'll have it in executive session right after this. And then we'll be heading to an election night party out at Alderbrook Golf Course tomorrow morning is my grandson's, well, tomorrow all day, is my grandson's birthday. Happy birthday, Matthew. Mason Transit, Mason Transit Authority Finance Committee meeting, E D C. Legislative Steering Committee meeting, South Side Traffic Observation. We're still doing that, right, Loretta?
Yes.
Okay. Thursday's my daughter's birthday. Happy birthday, Tiffany. And then we have, I have a Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting, the Belfair Sewer Ribbon Cutting. And don't forget that one. Please come if you can. And then a Pack Mountain Budget Adoption Meeting. Friday is Mackenzie's birthday, so we need to all remember to wish her a very happy birthday. We have Veterans Day Turning Point Fundraising Committee meeting on the thirteenth, on Wednesday. I'll be at the Shelton School District participating in a career expo, so at, at the high school. I'm pretty excited about that one. Business after hours at our Community Credit Union. Sister-in-law's birthday. This is a busy month for birthdays. Sister-in-law's birthday. Happy birthday, Kim, on Thursday. E D C. meeting on the fourteenth, Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting. Fran's birthday, Ari, on Friday. And then a Public Works Broadband Committee meeting. And then we're back here on Monday for our briefings, WASAC virtual. And then that week also, the nineteenth, it's gonna be a busy one, because we're working on the budget also, but it's the WASAC County Communit, County Leaders Conference in Vancouver from the nineteenth through the twenty-first. And then Friday, on the twenty-second, Suburban's Republican meeting. And then we're back for briefings.
So we had a few meetings we did in the last couple of weeks together. We had an employee recognition meeting that we did together, budget workshops, Board of Health meetings, a class comp meeting. I was gone for three days and attended for the RISCO. I got to judge a costume contest, which is always fun. Let's see.
At RISCO?
No. That would have been funner, actually, yeah. Left Board, I did attend WASAC, though, and I didn't see you on there. I know you had something else you were doing, but, so I don't know if you were there. If you did, we did that together, I just don't know, because I didn't go back and forth. So with that, after this, we have closed session. Belfair Sewer Ribbon Cutting's coming up, groundbreaking for Habitat for Humanity on a couple of their homes, Limpett Regional Clean Air Authority, the A C. the Audit Committee meeting, but I may need some help with that one, because it's, at the same time, I'm doing something else. Bond meeting for the North Mason School District Rotary, and I think that brings us back, and we start over again with, and we'll have more things with the budget together. With that being said, is there anything further, Commissioners?
I'll likely be at the Chamber After Hours on the thirteenth as well.
Awesome.
Okay. Anything further? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move adjourned.
I'll second.
Hearing no objection? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Go vote.